Welcome to the council meeting of May 21st, 2019. We'll have a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda?
I have a motion that's moved by Councilor Casey Owens, seconded by Councilor Stacy White. The council approves the agenda for the meeting held Tuesday, May 21st, 2019, as presented.
All in favor?
Passed, unanimous.
Any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared. Petitions and delegations? The 100th Anniversary Committee requests... Sue? You wish to speak on the behalf?
So this was a request that's come in from the Kirkland Lake 100th Anniversary Committee. Part of their celebrations is they have invited the OPP Golden Helmet Group, the motorcycle group, to do a performance on Saturday, June 28th. They're on their way through Kirkland Lake and the timing was perfect. So, the 100th Anniversary Committee is asking that following the parade, starting around 12:00 noon, that there's a 20 to 30 minute performance in front of the mall. So, they're asking council to please close Highway or the Government Road West from Main Street to the microtel entrance. This is so that they could do their performance there.
Questions? Councilor Owens?
Have we considered other spots in Kirkland Lake to do this?
It's the only place that's four lanes.
Because I remember when I first started teaching 15 years ago, they were Golden Helmets came to Kirkland Lake to do a presentation and they did it on Second Street between Churchill and Duncan.
They have requested to be on Gov... They have requested to be on Government Road. That's where they did it the last time they were here.
No, they were up on Second Street.
I was told... Sorry, I'm going based on the information that I got from the OPP themselves, so...
I would've brought the pictures down to prove it because I have a problem. Have we consulted the businesses that are going to be impacted by this? 12:30 on a Saturday afternoon, if I'm grocery shopping and I can't get out of my... The grocery store for half an hour, 45 minutes while this is happening, like what do I... There's no other way out of Independent.
I think if it's well advertised, there shouldn't be an issue with this, do you?
Yeah.
Really, I don't.
I really think it's an issue.
So, I don't think it's an issue. I really believe that people will be... As soon as the parade is over, we'll be moving to that end of town. I think if we advertise that the road will be closed, there will be an OPP car on corner of Government Road and Main Street there and the other one will be just at the museum entrance, actually, because there's two entries into the microtel. And the reason we're requesting that is that they have requested to use the parking lot at Heritage North in order to put their trailers to unload and upload their vehicles and then it's an easy access for them to get out of town. They have to leave immediately after their performance.
Sue?
Yes.
I do have to agree. I'm a little uncomfortable that the merchants haven't been... We haven't discussed this with them. We go ahead and approve this and they'll be up in arms. I don't think we can go ahead without talking to them, at least. My opinion. Councilor Perrier?
If that's the case, then why couldn't we have them from the stoplights or the streetlights right in front of Independent there? Have it start there. Would that be a bit better? That way, anybody going in Independent would be... Would have access to come and go as they please then.
Closing to which way?
Like, you know where you come out of the grocery store, onto the Government Road?
Mm-hmm.
Have those way, have the Golden Helmets start on the other side of there.
I don't have the size of the area they requested. I would have to check on that, Dennis. They were... We were told the specifics for size.
Yeah, because I can remember them performing there before.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
For sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilor White?
I do believe this is something that we have to talk to those business owners about. There's about 16 of them right there that will have no access in or out in case of emergencies. If, heaven forbid, something goes wrong, there's going to be a bottleneck there that affects the mall, Tim Hortons, McDonald's, the gas stations, Pettenuzzos. I think this is something that we have to bring to the business owners first and get their input on how they'll feel it will impact their business and their customers.
And with an extra, who knows, 5,000, 7,000 people in town, it's going to be pretty crowded in that area. I'm a little concerned. Any other comments?
So, is it up to the committee to go and approach the businesses or will the town do it?
What would be the normal procedure? The committee, I would say.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I will get the committee to... We'll draft a letter and we'll go drop them off to the businesses and see what kind of feedback we got to close off Government Road for 20 to 30 minutes. And I will get the measurements and maybe see if we can move it down a bit so that it doesn't block the entry to... That's the best I can figure out right now. We'll look into it. We'll see.
Yeah, I think we owe it to the business owners in that area.
Yep, okay. We'll do that.
And then we'll come back and have another look at it.
Okay, I will bring it to the committee and see if we can... Or maybe I'll go see the OPP. Maybe I'll go talk. Athena is actually in charge of that, so I will talk to Athena and see what we can do.
Okay.
Council's next meeting is on June 4th. Does that give you enough time to... That's two weeks from now.
Well...
So, can I defer this for two weeks then?
If you... If that happens, next time I come to council, then we would need a decision.
That night.
That night. Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Thank you. Acceptance of minutes and recommendations?
It's moved by Councilor Casey Owens, seconded by Councilor Stacy White. The council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The museum advisory committee meetings held March 20th and April 17th, 2019. The Kirkland Lake 100th Anniversary Committee held April 11th and April 25th, 2019. The department finance meeting held May 13th, 2019. The regular meeting of finance held May 14th, 2019. And the regular meeting of council held May 14th, 2019.
All in favor? Passed, unanimous. Reports of municipal officers and communications, CAO?
Last week when we were... Or the last council meeting, a number of issues had come forward where we were discussing efficiencies and government funding. We prepared a report on the funding that was received by the municipality, $715,000. There were no conditions attached to that funding, but it was made clear by the minister and subsequent government communications that it should be used for finding and addressing efficiencies, operational efficiencies within municipalities. The thought being that there will be more downloading, there will be more demand on the municipalities going forward and they're basically giving you an envelope to say, "Here, fix the way you're working because it's going to get a lot tougher for you." We put forward that the money should be taken from just the general status that it is right now and allocated to a reserve. It is not in a reserve fund simply because it doesn't meet the criteria of specificity that it goes into one type of expenditure such as the pool or such as Archer Drive. It could be used for different areas. That does not remove the fact that council is 100% in charge of what happens with that funding. It's just allocated and cannot just show up in the general operating. There are a number of items that we put forward that we believe meet the criteria, well, loose as it is. One is the Strategy Core Consulting, the mechanics diagnostic computer that was on the capital budget and the corporate website. One is communication, one is improvement because right now without the diagnostic computer, it costs us an extra, I'm not sure, I think you had said $3,000 or $4,000 back and forth for mechanics and that to come and diagnose the vehicles. I'm not sure if that's the accurate number, but it is in the ballpark. Two additional items that staff brought forward, a document information management system. We've never invested in that and quite frankly, we're at... I believe that we are at risk going forward for not having information that can be shared, worked upon, found, easily recorded and verified if an issue comes forward. One of the thoughts that bothers me specifically is the changes to the construction act that I was made aware of last week and the records management for that are far more robust than what has been in the past. Another one is to implement a gas card system for vehicle fueling at physical services. Right now, it's an old-fashioned method, dip and everybody records it and off you go. It's not particularly accurate and we do need to find better efficiencies in terms of fuel management. This would allow us to give better reports back to council as well as to how a vehicle is performing just on that one measurement. The other items I listed on page two, excuse me, were some of the other ones, improved public communications for trainings, mechanisms, policies, procedures, long-term asset management plan integrated with capital forecasting, not as a standalone. Energy efficiency audits for municipal facilities, potentially including retrofit funding. Economic development, you do have the CIP program in front of you. The offset staffing or contracting costs for efficiencies or mandated operational changes. One of the big ones that came down the pipe that seems to have taken the government itself by surprise is a community safety and well-being initiative. This is an extremely burdensome initiative whereby the government is asking individual municipalities to identify every risk that could affect policing, security, at-risk people in the community. It seems to be a download from the Solicitor General Office over to the municipalities. And we sat through a two-hour webinar on that and I think, quite frankly, everybody was just aghast that it's a huge undertaking. We're not really sure why they want to do that, but that's the kind of stuff that's coming down the pipe. So, to summarize, again, we're recommending to council that a reserve be established for expenses associated with efficiency measures. Alternatively, move the money to contingency reserve until such time as council does decide alternative uses for it. I may ask Sheri to come up and speak on some of these matters as well. Not yet, just see what happens.
I think we'll fit... We'll also... What comes out of the strategic operational review, there might be some good suggestions, recommendations in there that would fall into this category. So, we would have the availability of funds to carry that on. Also, I know Joanne has sent out several emails to other communities in the north and asking what they're doing with their portion and basically the same as what you're recommending. So, I do support that. We don't know what's coming down the pipe next year with the provincial government downloading, but put it this way, we will not be shocked if they reduce the provincial funding to the municipalities. This amounts to about $130,000 in these items that we can consider. You're not asking us for it to prove that tonight. It's part of the budget process, but that would account for at least not having to increase a tax levy by that amount, which is about 1.3%, roughly. Further discussion, comments? Counselor Ivanoff?
What about our master fire plan? I know there's got to be some efficiencies in our fire department if we can get... There were so many ideas in there that would improve efficiencies in our fire department and I don't see any of those on this list.
They would be as well. These are just a general list. As you go through individual departments, you would be identifying those as well. Some of them would be crossing all lines. The document management system. Part of the commentary that was within the fire master plan was better retention of the records and, sorry, I'm thinking right now, I'm getting confused with FirePro, but inspection reports, et cetera. That would be addressed here as well. Training also could be addressed. So, there would be items. Again, anything that would be identified, we would've tried to identify what the cost would be, identify what the need is, why, to define that, what the impact is and what the timeline would be for delivery. So, it would be for council's decision.
Counselor Adams?
Yep, I'm in favor of this, certainly putting the money aside. I'm just reading newspaper articles. We're going to be having to pay more for library funding and even over the next couple of years, paying more for the health unit as well to be able to get that done. So, finding efficiencies within ourselves is certainly important and I think this could almost go hand in hand with the implementation of a continuous improvement program or something could be measured, right? And you can be able to take what the recommendation is, you'd be able to show how much you saved and bring that back to the community. With this small investment, we were able to save this much, right? Then you can also implement your incentives for staff to provide input and you can see how much they would get based on how much value was able to return based on good ideas. I know you said it is happening currently. Staff is bringing ideas forward, but to be able to track and measure it is just a different ballgame. But I'm all for this, so... Wolf, did you say that for some of these things, they wouldn't have to come to council or all of them would have to come from council for the coming out of this fund?
From my perspective, if council is establishing a reserve fund for this, then we're obligated to advise council on any initiatives we bring forward.
So, this is going to be a reserve, not a reserve fund?
That is correct. And the reason for that was that it just does not have the... And I'm sorry, I can't say the word "specificity." Well, you know, it's not special enough. A very, very singly defined use. And we discussed that and as Sheri had pointed out, none of the other municipalities have allocated it to a reserve fund either. They've put it in reserves. So, we think that was probably the best way at this point.
Okay. Any further comments, discussion?
Our resolution is moved by Councilor Casey Owens, seconded by Councilor Stacy White. The council directs the acting chief administrative officer to open a reserve named Organization and Restructuring and Efficiency and deposit $715,910 one-time funding into the named reserve.
All in favor? Passed, unanimous. Requests for porta-potties?
Can't say that the job is not diverse. There... The clerk has received a number of emails and other communications regarding porta-potty establishment at Ken Ross Park. From... We're users as well and we certainly understand the frustration if you've got to go but you can't go. Yet, at the same time, we are obligated to bring forward to council some considerations that we do ask that council does take into account. Part of it is the... I'm sorry, I'm just... I'm not going to read from it, but the perhaps the most important for us is liability issue. It is not simply vandalism, a lot of needles, a lot of other problems that we have, that we think we would have in an unsupervised site. I draw your attention to the bus terminal that also closes washroom doors and it wasn't just because of things happening was dangerous to their staff. I'm... I would be very concerned about what occurs there and some child goes in afterwards and finds a needle or so. Vandalism, yes. That is a concern, obviously. The location would be best right near the pavilion at the trailhead. That's not town-owned land and on this side of it, it would probably require permission or lease that easily. We can work that out, I'm sure of that. There is a consideration, however, there's a home that's owned right on the other side of the pavilion and I think that at minimum, we should consult with that homeowner and explain what it is that is being considered. Monthly rent, that would have to be added to the budget. Regular cleaning and maintenance and also for emergency cleanup and maintenance if it is defaced or ruined in some way that the... Because obviously, we would be leasing this, that the service company could come in on short notice and clean it up. These are the concerns that we have. It's not that we're against it. We just want to point out to council, these are some considerations. That's all.
Counselor White?
Before the discussion begins in earnest, I just want to thank the members of the public that actually rallied together and made it possible for us to have this discussion. There are tens of people every week that our councils say, "You want something discussed at town council," email the clerk. And this is definitely from one person that got behind her idea and did exactly that and that's what we want. We want the people of Kirkland Lake to bring us more and more of their ideas. Whether it goes through or not is really not the issue, but we need to hear from you and good on the individual that brought this to us.
Joanne, could you clarify what the costs would be?
Okay, we did a quick search. There's only one contractor in town who does service Kirkland Lake and he does service other places in the town. What we found out is that he charges $110 per week, per unit. That's for the rental and one cleaning per week.
Okay. Would these... Sorry, Counselor Ivanoff?
I believe the town owns a couple though, don't they? Some porta-potties? I'm not saying that that's... I'm not sure if I'm in support of that because there is a Tim Hortons and McDonald's about within inches of that place. It's not like there's no bathrooms for half a mile and I, you know, I understand the concerns of liability. But I know the town does own some porta-potties that are available. So, I'm not sure if the cost is an issue. The cleaning is obviously going to be an issue.
Excuse me, could you advise when we're using our own porta-potties, are you... Are we servicing them or do you have a clean... You have a contract with somebody to clean? And what's the cost of that roughly? Three digits or two? Thanks.
Counselor Owens?
But I feel that bathrooms, you can't go week, especially porta-potty, you can't go week without cleaning. It'd have to be done on a daily basis and the cost of that, I... I would cringe to see how much that would cost us to have to clean these things every day when like Counselor Ivanoff said there is an alternative that is very, very close by, that is open to the public.
Weekly would be an awful mess, I'd have to agree. Oh, sorry. Counselor Adams?
Yep, I did contact one of the contractors as well. My question was just vague as to what would be rental be for a five-month period? And he said $2,000 for that time. So, I'm not sure how real that was. So, what kind of budget would that come out of? Is that public works at that one, if it were to go ahead?
Recreation.
Recreation.
The only other comparison that I can come up with is the Timmons on that road up towards, that leads up to the hospital. I think it's Gillies Lake Park. And the town of Timmons doesn't have any washroom facilities there or porta-potties, so... Maybe we could talk to somebody at the Timmons office and find out how they handle it or is it an issue? Right now, most people are using McDonald's or Tim Hortons. We've never had any complaints that I'm aware of, but I'm not sure if it's good for business or not, but...
Originally, when Ken Ross was established, one of the arguments that was used in favor of it was that it would draw foot traffic to that area in support of the businesses because it was a fairly downtrodden time economically. I'm not sure that this is exactly what they meant, but that was part of the idea that, okay, you take a walk around, go get a cold one and, you know. So, it was there.
Does council wish staff to do a little more checking on this and bring this back or do you want to make a decision tonight? Counselor Adams?
I wouldn't mind gaining staff's opinion on this and even including asking the business owners of the McDonald's and Tim Hortons how they feel about this, right? So, get their opinion on it and certainly look into it and get some more clear numbers.
That sounds okay? Do we need... We'll defer that then. Okay, thank you. Joanne?
So, this is a request that we had from Victim Services. They used to be called Vickers. Victim Services does have, do deal with survivors and victims of crime and every year they come and ask council if they would please declare a week that brings awareness to them. So, I have a resolution that's moved by Counselor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. The council declares May 26th to June 1st, 2019 as victims and survivors of crime awareness week in and for the town of Kirkland Lake.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approved, unanimous?
The next one, sorry, I'm just... My computer's slow today. The next one was a request that came in yesterday asking to please make an add-on to the agenda in order to get their liquor license in. But the Kirkland Lake and area ski water, water ski club is hosting a family fun day. This is in conjunction with the 100th anniversary. It'll be at Culver Park on July 6th and they are hoping to run a beer tent and they're asking for council support, calling this a municipal event so that they can get the support of council to push it through from the AGCO's perspective. So, I have a motion that is moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. The council declares that the Kirkland Lake Area Water Ski Club's Family Fun Day in conjunction with the Kirkland Lake 100th Anniversary celebrations is a municipally significant event for the town of Kirkland Lake and the council supports the Kirkland Lake Area Water Ski Club's application to the AGCO for a beer tent during the family fun day at Culver Park on July 6th, 2019.
Any discussion? All in favor? Passed. Introduction reading and consideration of bylaws?
I have a motion that's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. The bylaw 19-051, being a bylaw to deem lots 70 and 71 a registered Plan M111, not to be registered at 27 and 29 Premier Avenue West, be read a first, second and third time and acted and passed. And this is just, Ashley has done reports for you before where it's an owner who has two lots in two different names and it's deeming them so that they're one lot so that they can build a garage.
All in favor? Passed.
It's moved by Counselor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. The bylaw 19-052, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute a funding agreement with the Minister of Canadian Heritage for artifact mobile storage shelving at the Museum of Northern History, be read a first, second and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Passed, unanimous? Questions from council to staff?
Okay, so we've, we did have a few questions that came in, and just to go over the process that we have. All the questions are sent into administration by email. The clerk discusses these questions with the mayor, and if the mayor judges that these are questions that council may be interested in having staff dedicate time and energy to answering, time and resources, sorry, then the questions will be brought to council for council to vote on, is this what you want staff to dedicate resources to? So there's some questions that have come in that have been pretty simple or pretty quick and directed more at just one counselor, and so I've answered those right away. But these are some that have come in that, that might be of interest to, to, to look at. The first one had to do with the process for pothole reporting and can it be explained? What I did was I just quickly pulled from, sorry, I should show this out. I pulled it from the website, because there is a process that's been on the website for a while, and it's also been put into our newspaper so that people, residents do know how to, to report a pothole, so it is there. So I don't know if there's, if council would like staff to spend any more time on that? Is that, that's okay?
How much time do we want to spend on this? I mean, staff do have priorities as well. Do we need an in-detailled answer or a reasonable approximate? Counselor White?
Are we going question by question, or as a group?
Well, I think that those, those last four or five questions are in that category. How much time do, do we want staff to spend on that? And I don't know whether, and maybe staff can answer that, if they have records of how much time they do actually. I don't imagine on individual.
Stephen Don, if you can come up, might be easier just for the conversation. I think we could address quite a few of it right, quite a few of the issues right here, and then take it forward from there. The reporting the potholes basically the same as any activity request. Comes in, goes in through physical services, is assigned, and then followed up after that. We don't always call the people back and say, yes, the pothole has been filled, because that's kind of where we're, you know, don't have the resources for it. But they do rank them. Sometimes, when a call comes in, it could be a bad pothole, yes, but they could be working on two or three other issues, and there's a weather, whatever. There's other circumstances that will impact and influence how, what the response time is. But generally, it's an activity request that comes in. Correct? In terms of average amount of time taken from pothole reported to when it's repaired again, as I say, that can be influenced by a lot of different factors. How many people do you have out there? What else are they doing? Where is the pothole? Is it part of a bigger issue? And that is left to the road's foreman's discretion. In general, if you get the average pothole, you know, only for a small car, roughly, what's your turnaround time? Ballparking it? And that point is cracks in the road or something that is not going to be fixed in the same way. Another part of it is that, okay, if you're, you're trying three or four, you might get other reports in the same area. Try to put them together so the crews aren't just running everywhere.
So I assume that when they go out, they're either out for a full half day or day on that specific.
Is it?
Also, if I can add, is the crews have pails or bins with coal mix in it, and if they see something that needs to be addressed right away, they will address it. Whether it be roads or waterworks guys.
So that's regardless of a call-in, if you see it, fix it?
They'll try and fix it, yeah.
How has this year been? For a call-in, complaints, I should say, yeah?
For call-ins, it hasn't been too bad, but the roads are rough. That winter didn't help. A lot of freeze thaw cycles and a lot of asphalt that's in distress.
And I, I'm going to just go out, you also have to have the right kind of weather to fix a pothole. So when sometimes people call, especially earlier on, and nothing is done, it's not really much of a value to go and put a coal patch in and watch it come out again.
It's not uncommon for us to fill the same hole about three or four times in a season. If it starts early, potholes are generally created by water in the bottom of the hole. Actually, it's underneath the asphalt, and it pushes up in what they call lins. And unfortunately, there's water beneath the water that you can see in the puddle itself or in the bottom of the pothole. And that continues to come up as the frost comes out of the ground. So it's not uncommon for us to fill holes, again, as I said, three or four times, and sometimes more.
What does it cost on average to fill an, I don't know what, what an average pothole is, they all look bad to me, but.
I believe I did the calculation on what the minimum maintenance standard considers an average pothole. And that's 15 centiliters, or approximately the same size as a windshield washer jug. That is what's considered a pothole under the minimum maintenance standard. And I believe it was anywhere between $52 to $68 per pothole of that size. And as you get larger, of course, asphalt goes, we're paying this year $150 a ton for coal mix. They grow from there.
Are your prices based on the material or also on the time?
Based on the material, plus the equipment, plus the time you've taken to do it.
The, the next question there, what 10 streets in town cost the most to maintain? That would be interesting to know, because should these streets be priority for repaving? For total reconstruction of water and sewers as well? There are, I think you could come up with a top 10.
Easily.
Be interesting to note. We'll stop at 10. The 10 worst.
If, if I could ask, I'm sort of usurping your role, but if you could come back later with a, if you could map out on CGIS on the screen so the public can see what those 10 streets are, but also address what are the mitigating factors? If you know that the infrastructure underneath is shot, then identify that. And if possible, just on a ballpark, cost of repair, just so council has that information, I think it would be great.
That would be good. Then we would, we haven't had an update for a while, as to what streets are priority for paving and water and sewers. So it'd be good information to know.
The last question, I, I, I like that one, because when I lived on a gravel road, I replaced two windshields as well. That's kind of the cost of living, like when you have gravel and it's freezing in that. But nevertheless, if you, could you make any comment on maintaining a gravel road versus, you know, fixing the potholes on harding or something all the time?
Maintenance on, we wouldn't go to gravel. Municipalities in the north are having much better luck with grindings. They do, when they're first, if they're put down properly, at the right thickness and compacted at, at the time that they're installed. They do tend to become like an asphalted road. But the, the difference with this material is it's broken, it's a crumble, and it can be regraded and repacked the next spring. A lot of northern municipalities are going to it. I think the other, the other thing that might be a problem with going to this is that funding. We receive our funding, I believe, on asphalted roads, not surface treated. And that could cause some problems down the road.
Are there any, sorry, Counselor, are there any restrictions on using the crumbling on residential streets or any, anything like that?
Not to my knowledge, we've used some already.
Okay. Sorry.
Counselor Ivanoff?
I noticed that they had done that with the hospital drive, and that's a huge improvement. That was such a bad road, and they put that crumble on there, and it's just been amazing how that road has stood up. I know they've redone it, they've regraded it and just repacked it, I think last year, after it was on for about a year or two. And it's, I mean, compared to what it was, it's just night and day difference.
Yeah, the, if I may, that was, that was a different form of surface treatment. That was called chip and tire.
That was a $100,000 investment for, they were looking at a million to repave it, so.
That's correct, yeah. It's, it's a lot more reasonable, that one. And then the other one, the grindings that I was speaking of is even less expensive. But again, it doesn't have as smooth a ride, and it, it's not designed to take the punishment that, say, an asphalt or a surface-treated road like chip and tire would. But it is an economical way to deal with, if you want to temporarily condition a road that's going to be, say, redone completely, certainly an option.
Was that the same process that we used for the airport road? At the hospital?
Yeah, the same one as the hospital, that's right, it's chip and tire.
It seems to be holding up fairly well.
It does, actually, if, I don't know, about 30 years ago, they put the first layer that I can remember of it on the Esquire Park Road, or highway going to the 101, and it stood up, stood up quite well. Again, it depends on what kind of drainage you have, what kind of materials you have underneath. In sand, it works marvelous. If you have clay and rock, well, not so well, you get the same thing that we get now with the asphalt. You get the bumping, but with the grindings, you can regrade and readjust. If you want, Irwin Lane is one spot that we've used it on, and Industrial Drive. So if you ever have a chance to have a look at those, that's what we've placed them, we use theirs. And it's, it's worked out very well for us so far. Dunfield, I'm sorry, yeah, in Dunfield, we put a layer of it from, from the shop going to the streets, yes. And you'll see that it's, it potholes like asphalt as well, if you get it in right.
It might be worthwhile checking into what our funding criteria are, if it is actually asphalt or just a variation thereof. You know, if there's a possibility to do that, and we can extend it, why not? Try to find out anyway, so we can look into that. Does that kind of answer council for these issues?
Is, is a resolution from council to go back, what, what do you want staff to, to spend resources on? So my, my take of this is the only one that you need, you'd like them to come back is the 10 streets, the cost to maintain and the cost to repair. Are there any of those other questions that council would like more information?
Sorry, I just, yeah, I just have a question about the average amount of time taken. Don't we have like a ticketing system on the computer that, that would be able to be used to give us that information? Like when a complaint is made, isn't, is it not input into a computer?
It, it is, but it's at, it's not shared, like on the internet or anything like that. Ironically, that is one of the things I was looking at yesterday at Capus Casing. They do have that process, and when we get into with the website redevelopment, I like to ask them what they're doing with that. It, it's both good and bad, right? How come, how come, how come, how come? But at the same time, at least they do know, we'll have to find out, out.
Are we okay then to go ahead, Joanne?
Okay, so I have a resolutions moved by Counselor Stacy White, and it's seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. The council directs the acting CAO to direct resources to compile answers to the question, what 10 streets cost the most to maintain and the cost to repair?
All in favor? Passed. Notices of motion? None declared? Confirmation bylaw?
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. The bylaw 19-053, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held May 21, 2019, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Passed. Counselors' reports? Counselor Perrier?
I'd just like to say, I attended the last meeting of the 100th anniversary committee, and I'd like to commend those people because they're working real hard to, to make this thing as big a success as possible. I think things are a little slow, but they're starting to pick up now. And I really firmly believe the council should support them as best they can. Thank you very much.
I agree, thank you. I attended the Board of Governors' meeting at Northern College, and on behalf of the community campus committee, and asked for some support to form a working group to help put more students and additional programs up at Northern College. I think it was fairly well-received. It certainly had lots of questions, and wanted to make sure we sent the message Kirkland Lake needs the college, and we want it. And we're prepared as a town to do our part. I also attended the aquatic pool where the community living donated a lift for those that are in need of lifting. This unit cost about $11,000 or $12,000. So thank you, Community Living, for coming to the support of people of Kirkland Lake, much, much appreciated. Any other comments? Counselor Ivanoff?
I, I understand that our past mayor, Billy, always in hospital, and he's, he's not real well, and I'd just like to pass on our hope that he gets healthy soon and that, and that things get better for him.
Thank you, Eugene. I was there yesterday to visit him and thank him on behalf of the town of Kirkland Lake for all the work that he's done for the town of Kirkland Lake. When I look out at the board outside of the list of counselors and mayors over the years, I think he had seven terms, which is pretty amazing. He's certainly done a lot for the town. He finally did get the recognition that he deserved when he was, or received the, the award from the chamber recently. Yeah. Hoping all the best for him. Adjournment?
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Dennis Perrier. The council adjourns its regular meeting of council, which is held May 21, 2019.
All in favor? Passed.